Twenty-four. Tonight, Councilmember Penrose and Mayor Joaquin Jimenez are unable to attend, so you're stuck with me. We still have a quorum, three people. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is Proclamations and Presentations, the Midcoast Community Council update. Go for it, Scott.
Sorry. Finish it. Wow. Finish a couple of projects that we had and turn inward and kind of look at what we were doing and what we needed to do with the council. So, to start with, we approved and sent a letter to the school district regarding the excessive lighting in the evening at the Fairlawn School. They have a white roof and very tall light poles, and it was turning the Fairlawn School at nighttime into another sun. And the community kind of wanted that to be mitigated, so we sent a letter off for that. We also consolidated the community feedback regarding the GGNR plans for Vincent de Creek. The consensus in the community was more along the lines of they didn't want camping up in the creek and to maintain the level of horses that are boarded there now. And looking inward, we're trying to develop a recruitment strategy for the council. We need members of the community who are passionate about the Midcoast to join the And so anybody that can hear me right now, who lives between Miramar and Montero, we need you. So if you're interested, please let us know, and we'll set you up to be part of the Midcoast Community Council. We're also looking into opening a 501(c)(3) to aid in obtaining funds for Midcoast priorities. And that's what I have for this evening. Thank you.
Mayor's announcement. September 21st, we're going to have our End of Summer Festival. It's going to be wonderful, music at the IDS Hall. It's a new location. We haven't done that before. I hope next year we're all be at Carter Park, which is really set up for doing that. So I hope you all can get a chance to come. It's from 10 to 5 on the 21st. Are there any report outs from closed session? Catherine?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council, community. No, the council has not met recently in closed session. Nothing to report out.
City manager updates to council?
No updates tonight. We have several large reports on the regular agenda, so we'll spare you the city manager updates tonight.
Thank you, Matthew. I have four speakers for public forum. We'll start with Paul Grossman.
Good evening, councilmembers and neighbors. It's nice to be here. My name is Paul Grossman. I have, for the past 50 years, been a civil rights lawyer, starting all the way with school desegregation cases in the South. Towards the end of my career, I became a disability rights lawyer, and it is in that capacity that I'm here tonight. I'm here as a resident of Half Moon Bay residing at 40 Patrick Way, but I'm also here on behalf of a client, Dr. Mary Lee Vance. Mary Lee, as an orphan in Korea contracted polio, and now she's an individual of post-polio syndrome. Mary Lee has no use of her leg muscles whatsoever. Even to get from the bed to the bathroom, she must use an electric scooter. I chose to live at 40 Patrick Way for a very specific reason, which is that the parking is next to a ramp, and you can then walk, excuse me, mobilize from your vehicle to my home without any barriers. And once there, on the first floor, you have a bathroom, a bedroom, a living room, and an eating area. And my plan was that my many friends, who also are individuals with mobility impairments, would enjoy staying with me for the weekend in Half Moon Bay. And without lifting their scooters, which sometimes weigh 200 pounds and never weigh less than about 60 pounds, without lifting their scooters, we could enjoy the restaurants and the art galleries and all the cultural opportunities that Half Moon Bay represents and, for most people, is entirely accessible. The problem is, Dr. Vance cannot get from my home to downtown Half Moon Bay unless I lift her 60-pound scooter into the back of my car, drive into Half Moon Bay, lift her 60-pound scooter out of the car, and then we can enjoy Main Street. And the reason for this is that the Main Street Bridge, which frankly is old and decrepit and crumbling, is not accessible to people with disabilities. The wood surface of the sidewalks is so uneven, so rotted, so bumpy, that people with modern scooters cannot use either pathway to get into Half Moon Bay. Now, when people were in big wheelchairs with big wheels, maybe they could get over those bumps, but I can tell you, witnessing Dr. Vance make a valiant attempt to make it across the bridge on the sidewalks, that modern scooters, which are ultralight because they have small wheels, cannot negotiate either sidewalk on either side. So what is Plan B for those persons? Plan B is to drive where the cars drive. And as I'm sure you know, entering the bridge headed into town, it's a blind curve. It's an extremely dangerous thing to do. And I imagine it's also dangerous for skateboarders or people on scooters, just about anybody who's not in a car.
Paul, could you wrap up, please?
Yes, I will be happy to.
Thanks.
So what is it that I'm seeking from you all? Well, first of all, let me tell you, I'm not seeking legal fees. I'm not seeking damages. What I am seeking is an immediate prompt addressing of the fact that Half Moon Bay is inaccessible currently to people with mobility impairments. And I recognize that perfection is against the good, and all I want here is the good. I don't care how you solve this problem. Maybe you pour something over the unlevel ground. Maybe you put in epoxy. Maybe you put in plywood. I don't care. What I care is that I know that bridge is a historic bridge. I know that it has water running under it, and if I wait for the bridge to be rebuilt, I'll be in my grave. Some quick, realistic, feasible, affordable solution needs to take place now. And so what I'm asking is that you all adopt a resolution which will enable the city to solve this problem very promptly. And I just have one concluding thought, and then I will get off. When I was a civil rights lawyer in the South, there were schools that were designated for white people only and black people only, and it was intentional, purposeful discrimination. Disability discrimination is often different. It's what the courts call benign neglect. It means because you've never walked in the shoes of a disabled person, you don't understand how you're segregating them, how you're discriminating against them, how you're excluding them. But those sidewalks right now are a big fat sign. People with disabilities are not welcome here. This cannot stand. It must be fixed and fixed promptly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next is Brad Steinweid.
Good evening. I'm Brad Steinweid of 2800 Chancaliza. Vice Mayor and councilmembers and attendees. There was a planning commission meeting last Thursday, September 10, regarding the development at 2800 Chancaliza. The planning commission denied the application. That's the good news. The reason that I'm here is to say that the process of the meetings heavily favors the applicant. The applicant is the only one who can rebut. The applicant is the only one who has asked clarifying questions. Appellants have no recourse. Why am I bringing this up after the application was denied, a decision that I support and consider to be correct? Well, because information that the commission has sought was not correctly provided. The applicant stated, most crucially, however, is the fact that the policies in question do not apply to the property at 2800 Chancaliza. These policies, which refer in general to California Coastal Act, Policies 30235 and 30253, relate to coastal bluff top and beachfront development. A question from the commissioner. It appears that the property is within 300 feet of the bluff tops. Staff, the measurement that I'm coming up with is 475 feet. Commissioner Gossett, do we have an update? Staff, yes, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to provide an update on the linear distance in the area of the Pullman Water Course. There isn't actually a bluff edge. Like I mentioned, this area includes dunes and is not a bluff per se. In this case, it would be the beach edge. Chair Gossett, but the bluff has eroded. At the coastal trail, we have erosion of the bluff from the water, so I don't understand why we're not looking at the bluff edge at the coastal trail. This is from the California Legislature. Natural resource stewardship may include, but is not limited to, the stabilization of coastal dunes and bluffs and the planning necessary to implement those objectives. Firstly, the bluffs are seriously eroded due to Pullman ditch. That's evident to anyone who walks the beach. Secondly, protecting coastal dunes and bluffs are one and the same thing. I bring this information to your attention should the applicant make an appeal.
Thank you, Brad. Kristlyn Geet?
Thank you very much, Kristlyn, with the Coastside Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Chamber and Coastside Buzz are co-hosting a candidate forum on October 16th at the library, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. It's going to be two separate forums on the same night. The first one is going to be the Half Moon Bay City Council Candidates. All four have confirmed attending. And then after, we will have all four Cabrillo Unified School District Candidates, and all four have confirmed. This is going to be a forum, not a debate, and it's going to be moderated by the League of Women Voters. We have an online form if people would like to submit questions in advance, coastside365.com. But you can also come to the event and submit questions on the spot. So we hope everybody joins us, October 16th, at the library, 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristlyn. I'll be there. Rosio Avila?
So Rosio's going to present her comment, and then I'm going to go ahead and provide a site translation once she's finished.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio y personas presentes. Me llamo Rosio Avila, miembro del Comité de Viviendas Justas de Alas, y hoy vengo a invitarlos a todos ustedes, a la comunidad en general, a unirse en una vigilia importante. Vigilia por viviendas justas y celebración del mes de la herencia hispana. El viernes 27 de septiembre, de 6 a 8 de la tarde, lugar de salida de la casita amarilla de Alas, en 636 Purísima Street, y nuestro destino es hacia la Placita Magdutra. Traigan sus banderas, colores o trajes típicos que representen su país. Después de la vigilia, regresaremos a la casita amarilla para disfrutar de un refrigerio. Esperamos contar con su presencia y nos vemos ahí. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, members of the council and all people present. My name's Rosio Avila, and I'm a member of the Just Housing Committee from Alas. Today, I'm here to invite you all to join us at a community event and a vigil that is very important. This vigil is called Celebration of Just Housing and also for Hispanic Heritage Month. It'll be on Friday, September 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it'll be located at the little yellow house where Alas is located, at 636 Purísima Street. And our march is going to be towards Magdutra Plaza Park. Bring your flags, any kind of typical customary representation from your country. And after the vigil, we will come back to the little yellow house to enjoy a beverage and refreshments. We want you to all be present. We hope that you'll be there, and we'll see you all there. Thank you very much.
Gracias, Avila. Finally, Patrick Johnson is our last public speaker.
My name's Patrick Johnson. I live at 431 Quixote. Thank you tonight for letting me speak. I'm going to be running for city council, District 2, with the background of Half Moon Bay Planning Commission for eight years. Did a lot of work with Hatch School, and when we didn't have any money, we built that pathway, or I helped build it with donations that I got and with Eddie Andrini's help with large equipment. We were able to do that pathway between the school and the houses there that lead from Three Amigos to the school. Was recognized by Congress for the work that we've done. Pretty proud of that. I was on the beginning stages of everything I did was the Amesport Landing Homeowners Association, which we found a bunch of defects in the first development phases of that area. We won a lawsuit. We were able to reskin the whole Amesport Landing and all the membranes that failed and the water heaters that failed due to non-union work and certain things that weren't done correctly. I collaborated with the city many times regarding the habitat and the ditch areas to find a mitigated measure to do small addition to my home, and I learned a lot during that time. A big advocate of ADA pathways, easy access for people in handicapped chairs. I have a child that's in need, and she is fully handicapped, nonverbal, and we have to utilize what we have. And I've made some changes in our little personal pathway. I brought it to the attention of council back in the day. With those big poles over on Pillar Citos, we removed one, which gave me enough access, or everyone, I should say, baby carriage width, and now we can have access to the coast, which was a big plus for us. So I want to say thank you for that, even though you guys weren't on board, but just the fact that when people talk, people listen, and you guys made it happen for us. I was part of the PTO, and I got, we were part of the Measure M Oversight Committee, which is something that I was very proud of, that we finally got that approved. And I'm happy to say that on Saturday, the 21st, from 11:00 to 1:00, we're doing a meet and greet over at the barn. So I'd like to field some issues there regarding the Pullman ditch, ADA pathways, traffic safety, especially after the death of our honorable mayor, Joaquin, his son, I should say, his son, which to me is kind of, I've been out there handing out flyers, and it is kind of scary out there when you, and I did the trail, coming out of the trail and where it ends, and then you try to cross back over. There is some situations there that I realized last night on a bike ride. Things come to you when you actually utilize all the trails and you actually walk the trails. It becomes apparent. And those are the things that I'd like to make sure that we have safety for everybody in this town, even if you're in a wheelchair. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We do have one more in-house speaker and one more online speaker. Mary Berner?
Thank you. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to, I'll take this off. I just wanted to say thank you for supporting the senior housing for farmworkers. I've worked with several other, you know, city councils on a few other stuff on the other side of the hill, and you guys are just so lastingly fantastic compared to some of the other ones. I mean, really, to have compassion for people who are poor and who need help. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. We have one online speaker.
Paul Nagangast?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, city council members, staff, and the Half Moon Bay community. My name is Paul Nagangast, and I have lived and continue to live at 229 Valdez Avenue for over 20 years. I am campaigning to become your city council member for District 3. I have a goal of knocking on every door in my district to introduce myself and to ask what is important to you for me to bring to the city council as your representative. If I haven't been to your house, I am coming soon. I want to hear from you. But if you'd like to contact me ahead of time, go to paulforhmb.com, check out the website, and sign up with your email for future notifications. Check out the list of District 3 items of concern that we have been hearing from you as we go door to door. Agree on these or add more items. I'm wanting to hear and represent all of you. We also have planned a couple of meet and greet gatherings for District 3, so please sign up and stay tuned. And I will always thank each of you for your valuable time for any consideration of my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone wish to pull any of the items from our consent calendar? Not hearing that. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of July 2024. Accept the warrants list for the month of July 2024. Item 1C, adopt a resolution, amending Resolution Number CO511, citywide traffic regulations to modify the parking restrictions at the city hall parking lot.
Second.
Is that it? Yeah.
And we have a roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our agenda is ordinances and public hearings. Fiscal year 2023, '24, annual report on law enforcement services and activities. I'll have a staff report to start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually have many representatives from the sheriff's office, including our elected sheriff, Christina Corpus, here. We'd like to invite them forward to give the presentation. I will point out that the draft of the written report was published as part of this agenda, and people can refer to it, for specific statistics, and I think there'll be some other things covered tonight as well. So, welcome to our sheriff's leadership, and I think it looks like we'll start with our local captain, Richard Cheechov. Captain?
Thank you. Good evening. I am Captain Richard Cheechov. I am the sheriff's captain, that is in charge of the Half Moon Bay Police Bureau. Thank you. And allow me to introduce Sheriff Christina Corpus, sorry, under sheriff, Dan Peria, chief of staff, Dr. Victor Inj, and assistant sheriff, Ryan Monahan. And last but not least, Maverick and Deputy Dion. Before I begin, sheriff, would you like to make a statement?
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us this evening. You know, Captain Cheechov has been doing an amazing job, and, you know, we have tasked him with some extraordinary tasks, but he's living up to it, and we're here to serve the community, and we have been pushing forward. Just wanted to report out that in the last year and a half, we have hired over 110 law enforcement officers to fill our vacancies, and so we have about 60 people in training at this time. And we do not have a public safety issue in our communities, so I just wanted to point that out. And then introduce the new addition to the Half Moon Bay community. This is Maverick. He is a canine therapy dog. And maybe if Deputy Dion, if you can go up and let, if nobody has any issues with that. Yeah, so we now have two school resource officers that will be working in the schools, and Deputy Dion is the new addition with Maverick. And Maverick has already proven to be a great resource to the schools. We had a child that ran away from school, and Deputy Dion, with the help of canine Maverick, were able to get him to get back to school in a safe manner. So I'm going to hand it off to Captain Cheechov.
Okay, and first I'd like to start with our values, because any organization is only as good as the values that it holds. We are, recognize that as stewards of our community, we envision a world where all humanity is valued and respected. We recognize our role as leaders in this effort and commit to seeking creative and effective ways to work with and listen to the needs of our residents, businesses, and stakeholders. We do this with the passion to preserve safety for all who live, visit, or work in San Mateo County. This is embodied in our motto, "People First, Service Above Self." Sheriff Corpus' philosophy of "Beyond the Call" speaks directly to our commitment to doing more for our communities than just responding to routine calls for service. Through this philosophy, Sheriff Corpus encourages our deputies to see every interaction and call for service as an opportunity to understand and work to address the root of the underlying issue at hand, whether it's taking time to go the extra mile by connecting, excuse me, or connecting residents with organizations who can assist. We aim to build trust with our communities by going above and beyond. I will go into more detail as we go forward in this, but I think it's important to note that, at its heart, this is really exemplifying what it is to be a good community member of trying to help people. Although they've been introduced, let me introduce again our executive team, Sheriff Corpus, under sheriff, Dan Peria, chief of staff, Dr. Victor Inj, and assistant sheriff, Ryan Monahan. In the Half Moon Bay Bureau, we are broken into four teams, two day shift teams, two night shift teams. And you're going to notice that there's more than just the two deputies that are assigned to the city of Half Moon Bay by contract. There's also two deputies assigned north of Half Moon Bay, North Coast, and two assigned to the coastal areas south of Half Moon Bay, for a total of six on every shift, with an additional deputy assigned to Skyline on the night shifts. The reason this is important is that while there's only two deputies assigned to the city of Half Moon Bay, there is a synergy and an advantage of contracting with the sheriff's office, because this means that everybody on the coast shares information, communicates well, operates the same radios, report writing, so on and so forth. Somebody commented before I came up, "Why are there so many cops here?" Because we work together. We send our resources where they're needed. Calls for service. So this report follows the fiscal year, not the calendar year. So fiscal year 2223 begins in June, excuse me, July 1st of 2022 and extends through June 30th of 2023. Fiscal year 23 likewise begins in
of Staff Dr. Victor INJ, and Assistant Sheriff Ryan Monahan. And last but not least, Maverick and Deputy Dion. Before I begin, Sheriff, would you like to make a statement?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us this evening. I, you know, Captain Chichov has been doing an amazing job, and, you know, we have tasked him with some, some extraordinary tasks, but he's living up to it, and we're here to serve the community, and we have been pushing forward. Just wanted to report out that in the last year and a half, we have hired over 110 law enforcement officers to fill our vacancies, and so we have about 60 people in training at this time. And we do not have a public safety issue in our communities, so I just wanted to point that out. And then introduce the new addition to the Half Moon Bay community. This is Maverick. He is a canine therapy dog, and maybe if Deputy Dion, if you can go up and let, if nobody has any issues with that. Yeah, so, so we now have two school resource officers that will be working in the schools, and Deputy Dion is the new addition with Maverick. And Maverick has already proven to be a great resource to the schools. We had a child that ran away from school, and Deputy Dion, with the help of Canine Maverick, were able to get him to get back to school in a safe manner, so. I'm going to hand it off to Captain Chichov.
Okay, and first I'd like to start with our values, because any organization is only as good as the values that it holds. We are, recognize that as stewards of our community, we envision a world where all humanity is valued and respected. We recognize our role as leaders in this effort and commit to seeking creative and effective ways to work with and listen to the needs of our residents, businesses, and stakeholders. We do this with the passion to preserve safety for all who live, visit, or work in San Mateo County. This is embodied in our motto, "People First, Service Above Self." Sheriff Corpus' philosophy of "Beyond the Call" speaks directly to our commitment to doing more for our communities than just responding to routine calls for service. Through this philosophy, Sheriff Corpus encourages our deputies to see every interaction and call for service as an opportunity to understand and work to address the root of the underlying issue at hand, whether it's taking time to go the extra mile by connecting, excuse me, or connecting residents with organizations who can assist. We aim to build trust with our communities by going above and beyond. I will go into more detail as we go forward in this, but I think it's important to note that, at its heart, this is really exemplifying what it is to be a good community member of trying to help people. Although they've been introduced, let me introduce again our executive team, Sheriff Corpus, Under Sheriff Dan Perea, Chief of Staff Dr. Victor INJ, and Assistant Sheriff Ryan Monahan. In the Half Moon Bay Bureau, we are broken into four teams, two day shift teams, two night shift teams, and you're going to notice that there's more than just the two deputies that are assigned to the city of Half Moon Bay by contract. There's also two deputies assigned north of Half Moon Bay, North Coast, and two assigned to the coastal areas south of Half Moon Bay, for a total of six on every shift, with an additional deputy assigned to Skyline on the night shifts. The reason this is important is that while there's only two deputies assigned to the city of Half Moon Bay, there is a synergy and an advantage of contracting with the Sheriff's Office, because this means that everybody on the coast shares information, communicates well, operates the same radios, report writing, so on and so forth. Somebody commented before I came up, "Why are there so many cops here?" Because we work together. We send our resources where they're needed. Calls for service, so this report follows the fiscal year, not the calendar year. So fiscal year 2223 begins in June, excuse me, July 1st of 2022, and extends through June 30th of 2023. Fiscal year 23 likewise begins in July 1st of 23 and extends through June 30th of 24. I'll just refer to them as fiscal years 22 and 23, just for expediency's sake. In terms of calls for service, relatively steady with a slight incline, excuse me, decline, from 6,484 calls of service to 6,403. Our response times have increased, although this is a bit of a discussion. So fiscal year 22 had a response time, average response time for priority calls, in other words, emergency calls, of three minutes and 19 seconds. When we got the data back on the response times for Priority One calls in fiscal year 23, it was actually originally four minutes and 23 seconds, which is unusually long. I did suspect there was a flaw in the data as I began to review. I found several calls that were miscategorized. For example, one of them was people smoking in a park. That is not a Priority One call. Once I started going through just the ones that I was able to, because unfortunately it is a somewhat laborious process, that response time dropped down to three minutes and 50 seconds, and as I continued to go through the rest of the calls, I suspect it will drop more. When I have that final information, I will pass it on to the Council. Violent crime had a decrease of 27% from 58 in fiscal year 22 to 42 in fiscal year 23. Arrests were also down, but at the same time, this is somewhat expected, given in the decrease in violent crime, from 31 in fiscal year 22 to 26 in fiscal year 23. Property crimes decreased 37% from 143 in fiscal year 22 to 89 in fiscal year 23. And arrests for property crimes, excuse me, decreased from 18 in fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 23. DUI arrests are relatively consistent. We had 22 in fiscal year 22, 65 in fiscal year 23. Moving citations are down about 11% from 636 in fiscal year 22 to 568 in fiscal year 23. This is something that I will be tracking. It could be anomalous data, but I will be tracking to see if I can figure out exactly what is the cause of this. Parking violations are up from 553 in fiscal year 22 to 2,253 in fiscal year 23. And it appears that difference is mainly because in fiscal year 22, it was mainly, Half Moon Bay was mainly covered by a part-time community service officer who does parking citations. Towards the end of fiscal year 22, we hired a full-time community services officer who was dedicated to Half Moon Bay doing parking enforcement. And then at the beginning of fiscal year 23, we hired another community service officer for the coast side, but because, like I said, we allocate resources where they needed, they do help out in Half Moon Bay, resulting in the increase. Collisions are down. 50% fatal, we had two fatal collisions in fiscal year 22. Last year, we had one. Major collision, major injury collisions are down from seven in fiscal year 22 to zero this year, or last year, excuse me. And minor injury and non-injury are both down 15%. Moving on to other things that we do, one of the things that we have a pilot program, we have been, it has been helping us, is automated license plate readers. And without going into the details, which I believe that the, the Council has discussed before, some of the success stories in the last fiscal year was, it led us to an arrest and seize evidence in a recent gang assault case. Because it is networked, it allowed us to track down a at-risk woman who was reported missing out of Half Moon Bay, and she was located, I think, two counties over because of this technology. We have solved multiple auto burglaries by tracking the vehicle of somebody that was arrested and co-locating it at other burglaries, providing an invaluable lead and resource. And it recently helped us, alerted us to a stolen vehicle, that one stopped, we arrested the car thief, and recovered illegal firearms. Another joint project between the Sheriff's Office and the county's Behavioral Health Services is the Psychiatric Emergency Response Team. This is a co-response model with a sworn staff member and a licensed clinician, and they do outreach as well as respond to critical incidents, people, barricaded subjects, anybody who's having a mental health crisis, as well as assisting with the unhoused. It allows for both sides of it, having a sworn staff member and, like I said, a clinician. Along those same lines is the joint project between the city of Half Moon Bay and the Sheriff's Office of Cares, in which, I should say, it's also involves, I'll center it a little bit, I, my apologies. But what this does is it has people that can go out, offer assistance, and when deputies come across people who could benefit, oftentimes, not only are, can they devote themselves and free up sworn staff to handle other calls for service, but they can take the time to put these people in connection with services and help them in a way that we can't. Much like we said before about "Beyond the Call," this is an example. We don't think of this as a typical law enforcement duty, but at the same time, it's had great success in putting people in touch with support and services. As you may have noticed, Therapy Canine Maverick has started in Half Moon Bay this year. He is great for community events, but the real value is for victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, and child victims. He offers a level of support that you can't really get anyplace else. He is specially trained to be calm and supportive, which you may have experienced already. So he's there, or will be there as he completes his training, not only in the immediate aftermath, the forensic interview, but as time goes on, possibly up to courtroom testimony, or as a survivor's need. Again, not to sound like a broken record, but the Sheriff's Office does believe in a lot of community outreach. We recognize that law enforcement is a cooperative measure between the community and everybody. We've hosted, or co-hosted, over 25 events with the Community Engagement Union and the Half Moon Bay Bureau. And we do have a short video just covering some of them. Thank you, sir. And I would like to draw special attention to a few of the things just covered briefly in the, in the movie, is the Youth Defensive Driving Program, which takes new drivers, younger drivers, and allows them to spend an eight-hour day with our own driving instructors, covering a host of things to make them better, safer drivers. Hazard awareness, identification, evasive maneuvers, slow-speed maneuvers, in a controlled environment where they can build these skills, build their confidence, so they know when they get out on the road, they can use them. The fireworks buyback, this year, we bought back over 50 pounds of fireworks, and it raged from firecrackers to, and forgive me, I'm not explosive ordinance disposal, but from his description, it was over a half a stick of dynamite. So, and these are things that could have easily crippled or killed somebody. I would like to mention, one of the things, actually a couple of things the Sheriff's Office also does to keep the, the public informed, is SMC Alert. If anybody would like to scan the QR code, that it's a great way, it will send out messages, emails, to keep people notified of any emergency situations, which includes natural disasters, floods, fires, as well as crime alerts and other "Beyond the Lookout" type notifications, as well as location of services during a crisis. Along the same lines, San Mateo County participates in Zone Haven, now known as Genesis Protect. And if you scan the QR code, this is real-time data on emergencies throughout the state of California and beyond, and it divides it up into zones, so you can see in your particular zone what may be happening, as well as what may be happening in neighboring zones that may affect you shortly, with real-time updates. Along with keeping the public informed, we have Transparency Portal on our website. You can go there on the web anytime, day or night, and see information about things that we do, including statistics about calls for service, booking data, employee demographics, and more. This is going to be superseded shortly by a more robust website that is going to have more information and more context to keep the public better well-informed about what we do and what's going on in their community. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Council? I have one, if, are you? I, I see the data that indicates that the crimes are going down significantly, but if you read social media, it seems like the world's going to hell in a handbasket, that everybody is concerned about break-ins, car robberies, all kinds of stuff. Do you have a comment as to why that is?
Well, I think it's, and again, this is an opinion, is that it's a combination of things, and unfortunately, with the 24-hour news cycle, we're inundated, and I have yet to turn on the news and hear them talk about a good thing that happened. I have yet to hear them talk about, hey, somebody helped somebody across the street, or somebody stopped to help a disabled motorist. Unfortunately, they focus on things that get attention. That isn't to say that, you know, that is not to say that there aren't real concerns. There are, absolutely. We should stay informed and adjust what we do accordingly. At the same time, yeah, here in Half Moon Bay at least, we are seeing a decline, and I hope that trend continues. I will monitor it. But, yeah, like I said, unfortunately, there is a bit of fear mongering in the, in the media.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I made the same observations as my fellow Council member. I thought these numbers looked great, and there were significant decreases. And so, social media, you know, I'll call it out, Nextdoor, you'll see, and, you know, I get it, people will say, wow, a house was broken in under this block. No one ever comes and says, wow, you know, it's been a couple of years since we've had any car break-ins or any home break-ins. Congratulations to our law enforcement and to our good citizens here who don't commit those crimes. So, I think you've, and a lot of the crime, you know, I used to look at a lot of the crime reports, and a significant number were on over the weekend, and usually folks who didn't live here, and were coming for a visit to party in Half Moon Bay, and it just made sense to me. But I didn't notice many, you know, local crimes committed by locals, so that's probably true of most places, coast side communities, which people come for entertainment, with the summer and on weekends. So, so, yeah, congratulations. I think you've really, Sheriff's here have really delivered fantastic service over the years, and really appreciate it, and I love the addition of a mental health dog like Maverick, so thanks again. It's great.
And I'd like to add, if I may, that, you know, again, this is a cooperative endeavor, and we can't do it without the community. The community has been very supportive, and the community has been wonderful, and they're the ones who are really helping us achieve these results.
I just want to say, I think things have vastly improved over the last three or four years on the coast side, in terms of the level of activity, but also the culture and the attitude that the Sheriff's Office has brought to our community, and the increased attention to the beach. I'm hearing, you know, more and more positive things and seeing more positive things, and actually, I think the, the activity on Nextdoor has actually improved. And when you look at who's complaining, we're also seeing complaints from Redwood City and Belmont and things like that, but I think on the coast side, I think things, you know, really look improved, from what I'm seeing. So I just want to say thank you, thanks to Sheriff Corpus for the renewed attention to communication and transparency, and just general outreach. I think it's really been well-received by the community. And I, I love that you do so many events and sponsor so many positive interactions with, with youth and other populations on the coast side. I, I think it's really wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you. We are excited to announce, obviously, the new Sal Building that, where the Chamber used to have their original offices on Main Street, and it's in close proximity to all the schools. It makes more sense, so we're going to start giving it some TLC and, and hopefully having it open within the next two months. We also are proud to announce that the old firehouse on Abyspo Road, we're going to turn that into an Emergency Services Bureau building. We will have all of our assets, all of the vehicles that we may need to respond to a catastrophe or a flood. You know, we learned with, you know, 92 going down to one lane, how challenging it was, and so we want to make sure that we are here for the community and readily available. We will have an emergency kitchen there, so if, you know, people don't have any electricity, they'll be able to come in and get a warm cup of coffee and maybe a sandwich or a snack or something. And then also, we'll be able to help individuals to charge, whether it be a phone or it be, you know, a medical device that's needed. What we realized is that there's a great need for it here on the coast, and so we wanted to make sure that we can fill those voids and be here, be present, and let the community know that we care deeply about them and that we are a part of them and we're here, so thank you.
That's very exciting.
Count me grateful. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Anybody else? May I have a motion, please?
I move that we receive the, the update from the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. The next item is the Opportunity Center Contract Amendments. We'll have a staff report.
Karen Decker from our Community and Economic Vitality Division will be giving the report, as well as some of our service providers from the Opportunity Center. Before Karen starts, I wanted to just share a little bit of background and a, and a shift in, in the plan for tonight. As, as you probably saw in the staff report, a little over a year ago, we entered into agreements with the service providers to staff up and provide these great services to the community. One of the service providers that we hired to do this work is Job Train. One of the service providers that we hired to do this work is Job Train, and they're a long-established nonprofit on the Bayside that provides support to job seekers and the workforce, whether it's someone looking for a new job or somebody trying to reskill to improve their career. And as they staffed up the coast side, as part of the work that they did, they ended up hiring our very own mayor, Joaquin Jimenez, as their regional coordinator. And at the time, you know, we thought, okay, this is interesting because this is a city contract and a city facility. And we worked with the city attorney's office to ensure that we didn't have any issues with conflict of interest, and we believe we're okay. But as we get close to renewing that contract, the question has arisen again. And out of an abundance of caution, our city attorney has contacted an organization called the Fair Political Practices Commission, and they help to advise political candidates or elected officials on ethical decisions and how to navigate some of these challenging questions. And out of an abundance of caution tonight, as we develop our formal response and approach to this going forward, we've decided that on the resolution and the recommendation tonight, we will only be recommending approving contract extensions for the other service providers and remove to Job Train and their funding source from tonight's discussion decision. Our hope is to have this, our legal ducks in order for the October 1st meeting, as all of these contracts expire on September 30th. And we believe and are hopeful that we'll be able to come to the conclusion that it's appropriate, as long as the mayor accuses from any decision-making related to this, which would be the plan, that we can move forward on October 1st with extending the Job Train contract. But tonight wasn't the night to make that happen. So, a little bit of shift. We have a revised resolution and a revised recommendation that's part of the presentation tonight. Job Train will still present because they've been doing great work in the community, and they're a real asset within the OCC. And we want to hear about their successes and the work that they're doing. And this change of approach, it does not reflect any of the work that they're doing. We're really happy with Job Train and the services they're providing, and we just need to make sure we do this the right way so that they can hopefully continue to serve our community going forward. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or our city attorney could answer them as well. Otherwise, we'll turn the time over to Karen to begin the presentation. Okay, Karen, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Matthew. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and Community. Karen Decker, Economic and Development, Economic and Community Vitality Manager. The Opportunity Center is a program that's very close to my heart. It's a first-of-its-kind service center for our community. It serves small businesses, and it serves job seekers. It's also the home of a new business incubator, and it's the new home of our local Chamber and Visitors Bureau. I bring an impressive team with me here tonight. They will, the team themselves, they represent the menu of offerings available at the Opportunity Center, and you're going to hear from some of their leadership a little bit later in the presentation. I really want to sincerely thank the City Council for your investment in the Coastside Recovery Initiative and your investment in the Economic and Community Vitality Division. It's driving this work, and we could not do this without your support and your big-picture vision. I also want to thank San Mateo County, who sponsored the Opportunity Center and who provided the funding for two of our local recommendations, the creation of a Business Assistance Center in partnership with our local Chamber, as well as the creation and Oh, thank you. Okay, so within this presentation, I'm going to provide a brief overview of the Opportunity Center, what is its purpose and what is its connection to our local economy. We're going to hear an update from our service providers. Three out of the four contractors that provide services out of the Opportunity Center are new or newer to the coast, so especially delighted to have them here. And we have the benefit, they may be new to the coast, but they represent decades of regional experience that the coast side gets to benefit from. It has been about nine months since we had a soft opening in January, and then we had a ribbon cutting in April, and there's been a lot of great work that has happened since then, so we're excited to share that with you this evening. And then finally, staff are going to ask you to consider approving a recommendation to extend the current services by amending a series of contracts, and that's with no additional funding requests. One of the principles that really drive our economic efforts is this belief that a vibrant economy and a vibrant community are interdependent and they're interconnected. When our residents have access to workforce development and good jobs, they are in a better position to afford our astronomical housing and gas prices in our region. When the city invests in housing and infrastructure and parks and recreation, that really improves our quality of life. If we can create the conditions for small businesses to thrive, then they create local jobs, which generates local general tax, sales tax, hotel tax, and that enables this council to make really important decisions that improve our infrastructure or fund capital improvements, all of which make Half Moon Bay an incredible place to work and to live and to recreate. Just anecdotally, I belong to a couple of economic development associations where a large number of cities gather to troubleshoot, and there is no one answer. Cities really struggle with what workforce development looks like, what success looks like, developing best practices, how to retain and attract small businesses. And so, what we're doing in Half Moon Bay, our challenges may be common, but I'm told repeatedly that what we're doing is very untypical for a city of our size. So I'm proud of that. I hope that you're proud of it as well. Here are the key partners involved at the Opportunity Center. They are co-located under one roof, and that is by design. We believe that there is synergy between each of their menu of offerings. The Chamber has a really unique role. The Chambers specifically being Stephanie and Krista Lynn. They are a small but mighty team. They are the warm welcome when someone were to walk into the Opportunity Center, whether they're a tourist looking for the bathroom, whether there's someone looking for a job. And so, there's this really lovely connective tissue between warm handoffs and referrals. They are really the maestro, and what they are able to do has not gone unnoticed by the Economic Advancement Center in South San Francisco, who recently presented at an economic development conference that Matthew and I were able to attend. And they shared within this large venue the good practices coming out of Half Moon Bay, and it's inspired them to reach out to their local Chamber because they want to see if they can run, play that role in South San Francisco. Coastside Venture Studio is the name of our new business incubator. It's managed by American Energy Society. And the incubator really reminds me, it hearkens back to the days of Team Innovate and the Coastside Recovery Initiative, because it's really about fostering regional innovation. And you'll hear more from Eric Vettel, the president and founder of American Energy Society, in just a bit. But the startups that we're attracting in this business incubator are unique because they fall within three verticals: ag tech, water tech, or the built environment. We have not had a hard time recruiting startups. In fact, the program has generated a lot of interest, and the startups that have signed on with us, they are not fledgling. They have viable concepts, many of them have, are looking or close to proofs of concepts. And honestly, they don't appear so much as in the incubation phases we thought. They are actually mostly appropriate for an accelerator, which is a really kind of surprising delight we weren't expecting. Eric will talk a little bit more about the startups that we've brought on, but we're already seeing some local benefit. We see some really exciting regional networks and partnership opportunities coming into play. Job Train, in a short amount of time, has enrolled 60 clients. Fifteen have already been placed in jobs. The team is really committed to meeting the community where it's at. So while Job Train is housed out of the Opportunity Center in the heart of downtown, they also have satellite sites at the mid-coast in Supervisor Mueller's office in Pillar Point Harbor, making it more accessible to people in the northern part of our county or an incorporated coast side. And they're also looking at sites in Pescadero and, and Moon Ridge, sorry. How we do the work and how we work with local employers is a really interesting conversation that city staff has had with Job Train leadership. We have this mutual interest in creating more career training opportunities here on the coast, because there are really great programs in the trades, there's commercial kitchens, there's infrastructure on the other side of the hill, but there's less of that here, and that takes a while to build, that's going to take funding. But there is a lot of potential, and there are some exciting conversations in that arena. Renaissance has served 63 clients to date. They've hosted 10 workshops and featured eight different series, including topics on industries that we've heard a lot of need for, such as childcare. I had the pleasure of attending a ceremony a couple of months ago that provided certificates to the first inaugural Opportunity Center cohort from Renaissance, and these participants attended a business planning course over a series of many weeks. The whole ceremony was conducted in Spanish, and I noticed that some of the entrepreneurs who were taking part in this business plan, one person was starting a clothing line, another person took on a bakery, another person was opening a cleaning service, another person was starting a party planning business. And the food that was catered at the ceremony was from that bakery, and the decorations were from that party planning business. And then I saw Job Train staff and Chamber staff, in addition to the Renaissance staff and city staff, making comments, showing support, taking photos, cleaning up. I mean, it's truly a partnership, and it was really moving to see the genesis of this idea, the facility, the infrastructure, the menu of offerings, the providers come on board, and then it's resulting in people walking away with a certification and starting to live out their dream. Okay, so moving on to some brief numbers. It's one thing to create it, but it's another thing to promote it and hope people will take advantage of the services. And so, we have, we've gathered some numbers for you based on website views and Nextdoor research. The Chamber's done a really phenomenal job of getting the word out. The downtown location, having the visibility that we hoped for and the foot traffic we hoped for, is seeming to be realized, which is very exciting. Over 120 people have been served between Job Train and Renaissance. They're working really closely with a population, you know, very hard-hit by the pandemic and are continuing to experience some uphill climbing, so more needed than ever. And then, as far as Coastside Venture Studio goes, we have five startups that have formally committed, we have three in the wings, and we have interest in the second-year cohort already. And I think Eric will chat more about that as well. So at this point, I'm going to invite brief remarks from the Chamber, from Coastside Venture Studio, and from Job Train and Renaissance leadership. Let's start with Krista Lynn in the Chamber.
Thank you, Krista Lynn, from the Chamber of Commerce. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody on this dais, from Karen all the way on over, because all of you have been a part of this journey going back to 2019, when we started putting it together because we knew this was something that was needed, and then the pandemic hit. And so, you guys were so far ahead of the curve, and we just really appreciate it and bringing the Chamber along. Why this matters is because our community hasn't had a group of organizations in the same house so dedicated to their success. The Chamber and the city had been working on this, but it was very slow-going. And with the infusion of the investment from the county and your support on the new building, you can see that, just based off of the numbers, everything has skyrocketed and turbocharged. And we see it every day when people come into the office and are so excited to engage in the services on every level. At the old Chamber office, we used to see, on average, maybe 15 to 20 people walk through our door because the location was so far down Main Street. And in July alone, we had popped up to over 350 people just for Chamber services, as well as continuing that climb. So we thank you very much for the wonderful facilities. Another great thing that has come out of it is the ability to have businesses utilize our space for their business. So some cool stats is, since April, we have had 21 different classroom rentals accumulating to almost 85 hours of community members educating community members. So that doesn't include the 700 hours by Job Train and Renaissance with all of their classes and things they're doing. That's just our community utilizing our space. And similarly, we've had the meeting room rented out 30 times for nonprofit boards to have their meetings and other businesses to have their important meetings and serve local clients, including an immigration lawyer who's working with Coastside Hope. And that has equaled almost 60 hours of community service just outside of us. And so, with that, I would like to note some really happy comments that we get, more than I could count. People coming in so excited that we're so easily accessible, that they come in and they know our faces, because the majority of staff live here, grew up here, and that has made the entry into the community so much faster than we possibly could have done or thought was going to happen, because they already, we're the local Cheers. Everybody knows our name. And a really fun one, about six weeks after we opened, one thing that was really important to us is that we did come accessible to everybody. We actually had a retired LA County staff member who was very integral in ADA compliance in the LA County system, and he came in with his mobility-challenged partner, and they just commented about how wonderful the facility was, that they couldn't believe how we had managed to make it so easy for anybody coming in, that we had all these smiling faces, but that every aspect of our building was completely accessible for anybody of any mobility level. And so, we just keep getting the good comments and just really, really appreciate everything that you've done to make this come true. And I did it without crying.
Great, thank you, Krista Lynn. Now I'm going to invite Eric Vettel to talk about Coastside Venture Studio.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Council. My name is Eric Vettel, and I'm a proud resident of Half Moon Bay. I'm also the president of the American Energy Society, and we operate the Coastside Venture Studio. Out of respect for your time, I'm going to limit my update to just three highlights about our venture studio. But of course, my colleague and I, Corinne Buker, are more than happy to answer any of your questions. The first highlight, market-ready economic impact. All venture studios face one common challenge, the readiness of the startups involved, ranging from the idea phase to market readiness. Best case is that the startups are ready to go to market. However, almost all venture studios are filled with startups in the idea phase, which can be years and many failures before there is any economic benefit. I am pleased to say that all eight of our startups at the venture studio are either prototyping, market-ready, or market-engaged in earning revenues, all of them, which means the impacts of economic benefits will be realized sooner rather than later, and in some cases, right now. The second highlight, a full and fully functioning venture studio. Our first cohort is full, and the startups are operating in sectors that matter to the coast side. In agriculture, what we call ag tech, we have the Nitrogen Company and Phlox Robotics. In infrastructure, or the built environment, we have Gridwrap, Secured Carbon, and Mercurius. In water or water tech, we have three proven startups in stealth mode, meaning they have to remain anonymous while they prepare their prototypes for market. I should also point out that we are currently helping two of the startups negotiate multi, multimillion-dollar contracts right now. Third highlight, coastside first and financially independent. Third highlight, coastside first and financially independent. It is tough to choose a third highlight among many highlights to talk about. I could talk about a few of the next startups in Cohort Two, some of the local economic benefits already realized, or the interesting collaborations with Renaissance, the Renaissance Center and Job Train. But I think the most relevant third highlight to share with city council is this. Consistent with your vision to spin out a self-sustaining, financially-independent venture studio that continues to offer economic benefits to Half Moon Bay and the coast side, we have secured a verbal expression of interest to fund the Coastside Venture Studio in 2026 and going forward. In summary, I am very pleased that we're being looked at as a textbook example of an ideal public-private partnership. Indeed, our model here in Half Moon Bay is being considered as best practices by, among others, Orlando, Las Vegas, the United Nations SDSN, and most recently, at a workforce development conference in southwest Virginia. Indeed, I think it's clear, you've created something special, a vision that others want to follow. Thank you for leading the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Barry Hathaway from Job Train.
Good evening, vice mayor, council members, city staff. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Barry Hathaway, and I'm the CEO at Job Train. I've been with Job Train for seven years, but I've been in the nonprofit workforce development space for about 20, so, you know, I just want you to know that this is not my first rodeo. And speaking of not my first rodeo, I also want you to know that this center here is the sixth one we've stood up, up and down the Bay Area, and the good news about that is every time we do it, we get better at the startup, we get better at the ramping up, we get better at the model that we've developed for these communities. Before I say too much more, I want to introduce the two most important people for Job Train in the room, our employment specialists who are operating here in the OCC, Ed over here, and Lupe over here. When we talk about the work that's been done, they're the ones who have done it, so thank you both very much. So our model for starting up is to come into the community and get to know the community, and that's what we've been doing since we hit the ground about five months ago. We've enrolled nearly 60 people, and we have spoken to 33 employers, one-on-one, to get a better sense for what do the individuals in this community who are coming to us need and want, and what are the employers needing and wanting? And that's really helped us to understand better how we can now begin curating the things that the Half Moon Bay community needs from us. So what we've brought is our basic services that allow us to get to know the community, and we're just moving into the phase of, okay, now we see, now we're beginning to see what is uniquely needed here. So I want to share a couple of the things that we're exploring right now. For instance, no surprise, we're needing a lot of ESL language services, whether it's learning English or it's services in Spanish, so we're turning on more and more, our staff speak Spanish and English, but we're also turning on more programs that are in Spanish or to help Spanish folks learn English. And for that, a lot of the time, we're finding local partners, because we have some great resources here in this community, and we want to work with those resources and refer clients to them. We're now looking at some new short-term training opportunities, think of preparing to be a nanny, or maybe a hospitality certification. So we're beginning to explore new things we can bring that are uniquely needed and wanted by the members of this community and the employers in this community. We've seen a lot of need for digital skills, digital equity, that's digital training, digital equipment, and so we've been bringing now more and more of that, and we're trying to ramp up our digital training programs, because after all, if you want a job in this economy, no matter where you are, you've got to have some good digital skills and access to the digital world. We're also very intent on trying to figure out how we can bring career training programs to the coast side. They're not inexpensive, so it's going to take some serious fundraising, but first we have to understand what would be the best ones. Job Train offers career training in five different sectors of the economy, but others do other sectors. So once we understand where the biggest need is, we'll begin working on trying to raise the money to bring some of those career training programs in. In the meantime, we're going to help residents get over the hill to the training programs that exist over there. We've only got about five referrals to career training right now, but they're going very well so far. Little things like expanding our office hours into the evening, or bringing English workforce readiness, Spanish workforce readiness classes to the community. Now it's the time for us to begin curating, now is the time for us to begin building programs uniquely needed by this community, and I'm very, very excited to do that. The thought I want to leave you with is this, Job Train is not about helping people get a job, it's a means to an end for us. Our goal is to help people step onto the path of economic mobility, so they can begin for the rest of their life growing economically. So a job is where it starts, basic skills are where it starts, but when somebody walks in the door of the OCC and comes to Job Train, they're coming into the whole thing that is Job Train, and our hope is that we will begin helping them navigate their economic mobility journey. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be in this community, we're very, very happy to be here, and thank you for your patience as we figure out how to get it right.
Thank you, Barry. And now I'd like to invite Sharon Miller from Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center.
Excuse me, Karen. I just had a quick question for Mr. Hathaway from Job Train. I was curious, I know in the past, some of the unions out here have been, had apprenticeship programs, like for electricians, et cetera. Are that, are any of those sort of partnerships being looked into as well with some of the unions?
Well, it's interesting that you would say that, because we do see construction trades as one of the things that is a logical, viable program to bring here. Our construction trades program is a carpentry union program, and it is designed for, as a pre-apprentice to a carpenter's apprenticeship. And we have a relationship with the carpenters' union, so they are hiring, are bringing on at least five people each cohort into the union. So that's the union we have a relationship with, but we're not limited to that, if there's a different need and we can set up a different program.
Yeah, I think it was IBW, right, was working with the high school students and bringing in apprentices, so in case there's students who might want to check.
Yeah, I mean, the unions are a great opportunity, because they are going to help people not just get a job, but grow in those careers and build their economic mobility, so they're a great model for us to think through.
Great, thanks for coming back. Thanks.
Can I actually chime in here briefly, just, it's related, so, related to this conversation, there's an opportunity that we have to get some funding potentially for a feasibility study around some of this work, and I think we have a meeting later this week with a lot of our neighbor, our community partners, to start planning how and when that feasibility study will move forward to identify what the needs are for more of the technical training and the trades training. And so I think this is something over the next couple of months, you're going to hear a lot more about, and I think as we've heard today, the timing is perfect, really, to start moving some of this stuff forward.
I'm hoping that those partnerships include the school district.
Are they, I think the adult school was part of that.
The adult school, College of San Mateo, yeah. I think that's really important, because we want programs in the schools eventually that are feeding people, you know, into these other programs, so.
Yeah, we feel very strongly about that as well. You know, when we're finished with somebody and they get started in their career, many of them will do better in their career if they'll go back to school. So the continuation of education is important, and pulling graduating seniors who aren't going to go to college right away into a trade can be a way to stabilize them as they get ready for a college career, so.
Kristalyn really seems like she wants to say something.
You have to do it at the mic.
The OCC is hosting a class tomorrow with our local contractors to start engaging with the high school students and their career technical education path. We've had multiple meetings that Job Train staff has been a part of, and we are working on providing those collaborations so that local students can work with local contractors as well as the unions.
Awesome, thanks, Kristen.
Okay, Sharon, Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Miller, I'm the CEO of Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, and thank you, thank you, vice mayor, thank you, city council, thank you, Karen. It's really an honor for Renaissance to have this opportunity to work with our wonderful partners and to work in Half Moon Bay. And our work is, of course, the small business development piece, and as I'm sure all of you know, entrepreneurship is a great pathway to economic mobility. It's a great contribution to our community, it creates economic mobility for the business owners, and it's creating jobs. I trust that most people got their first job working at a small business. I did. Small businesses are able to hire people and really engage in the community. So we're really happy to be able to bring that part of our work into Half Moon Bay. And I am joined here tonight by Lisette Solis, and Celeste Hernandez, and Nora Rison, and Tim Russell, and this is a team who is working in Half Moon Bay. So since January, as you've heard, we worked with about 63 clients who have gone multiple services. When you come to Renaissance, it's not one and done, you really become part of the fabric of our organization. About a third of these clients are already in business, and I think it's remarkable that Half Moon Bay supported these businesses throughout the pandemic. It's really a testament to the community of believing and trusting in these small businesses, and our work now is to help them stabilize and to help them grow. Two of our clients, I'm sure you all know well, are Coastside Baking Company, and Moonside Bakery and Cafe, you heard about their food from our graduation. But these two businesses were purchased by the employees, they purchased them from their long-term owner, and while they knew the ins and outs of the business, they didn't really know enough about business itself. So we've really been helping them to formalize their operations and set up very sustainable structures. We're also working with family childcare businesses, and our goal is to provide people with opportunities by creating family childcare, but also extending the opportunity of placements for childcare, which is huge for working parents. The four people who just finished our program are eligible for micro grants of $1,000 that we were able to secure from another source, so we'll be helping them to get a little boost into their businesses. Renaissance also operates the Small Business Development Center, and that is a program that provides consulting throughout San Mateo County, and we have brought those services into Half Moon Bay and now are providing office hours. Like our partners, we offer bilingual, bicultural, responsive services, and our model is to give really intensive support. We have multi-session classes that help people from the business idea stage into business planning, we help people to build networks, we offer ongoing skill building and consultations, and we're doing a lot right now in financial literacy, and also in digital marketing, digital skills, e-commerce, and we are really excited, we received a donation of laptop computers, so we're going to be able to distribute those to our clients who don't have them. And finally, in addition to the partners we have at the center, we're working with Puente, the Half Moon Bay Library, Coastside Hope, so that we can expand our reach even further. So these new partnerships are allowing us to work in Half Moon Bay and beyond to really serve the entire coast side region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you to all our speakers for really helping round out the presentation in a way that a city administrator just couldn't do it the same way, so thank you. And I also want to say that, if you may be wondering, we're asking you to consider amending these contracts through September of next year. What happens after September, right? So this is a question that I think a lot about, that Matthew and Erica Wood and leadership Kristalyn think a lot about as well. And deeply caring about this issue, I just want to bring up the fact that the city is engaged in a cross-site evaluation with two other centers, one located in North Fair Oaks and the other located in South San Francisco. We are looking at the short and long-term impacts of this work, and we're doing this through a formal evaluation process. Thank you to the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, who's funding this effort, and thank you to Erica Wood, who had the foresight when we were first launching this and could read the tea leaves and think, we don't know what's going to happen, but whatever does, let's be able to measure it, let's be able to tell a story, let's have reliable data, let's glean that, and hopefully, if we make the impact that I suspect that we are, that will better position us to approach investors and funders so we could look at long-term sustainability over time. And the last thing I want to say before giving the floor back to the vice mayor for clarifying questions and for public comment, I looked out as I was acknowledging the community earlier, and I see the whole Chamber team, I see the whole incubator team, I see the whole Renaissance team, the whole Job Train team, the whole family showed up tonight. So if you work at the Opportunity Center or an agency that does or have supported the work, could you just stand up and be recognized? And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Karen, thank you, all the presenters. Are there any clarifying questions from the council? I have four public speakers, the first is Lisette Solis.
Hello, good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lisette Solis, and I am the program manager for Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center here on the coast side. I joined in May of this year, and I'm proud to work alongside our dedicated program coordinator, Celeste Hernandez, who also joined the team earlier this year. Celeste, would you mind standing up? Thank you. Both Celeste and I were born and raised here on the coast side, and it's an honor for us to now serve the community that shaped us. It's always been a personal goal of mine to give back to Half Moon Bay, and I'm able to do exactly that because of the OCC's presence here. I'm incredibly proud to be part of efforts that bring essential and impactful resources to local entrepreneurs and small businesses, helping them thrive in our community of Half Moon Bay. I also want to take a moment to thank Renaissance, our partners at the OCC, and the city staff for their unwavering support of our coast side team. OCC, woo! Sorry, I'm, your commitment of partnership have made it possible for us to continue expanding our work and provide concrete resources to the community. As a mom, I feel fortunate to raise my children in a town that offers such strong support to its residents. To the council and everyone here today, if you know of any small business owners or entrepreneurs who are, could use of our assistance, please send them our way, we're just around the corner, 637 Main Street, and we're eager to continue to serve and strengthen our community. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Lisette. Rosa Alva Mendez.
Hola, mi nombre es Rosa Alva Mendez.
Hi, my name is Rosa Alva Mendez.
Yo soy un cliente de Renaissance.
I am a client of Renaissance.
Sí. Bueno, yo quería compartir en lo que a mí me ha ayudado el ser parte de este magnífico, realmente recurso para la comunidad.
So I just wanted to share, and really, what is this magnificent resource for the community?
Yo soy madre soltera y tengo tres adolescentes.
I'm a single mom and I have three teenagers.
En mayo, una de mis hijas tuvo un accidente con un carro que golpeó su cabeza, tuvo un accidente con un carro que la golpeó.
So in May, my daughter had an accident, a car hit her.
Entonces, para mí fue muy difícil el conseguir y estar estable en un trabajo porque tenía que estar en el hospital con ella y estaba yendo y viniendo. que estar en el hospital con ella y estaba yendo y viniendo.
So it was really hard for me to kind of be stable or stabilized because I had a job and I had to be, you know, kind of back and forth to the hospital.
Yo tenía mis planes de tener mi propio negocio, sin embargo, por lo mismo de que soy la única aportando en mi hogar, me era imposible.
So I had my plans, own plans to have a business, but because I'm the only breadwinner in my family.
Yo describiría que entrar en este recurso que brinda Renaissance es una esperanza para mi vida.
So I would have to describe that this Renaissance resource is like a hope in my life.
Porque ahora puedo estar implementando todos los recursos que me brindan para hacer crecer mi propio negocio y tener tiempo para mi familia.
Because I can really implement all of the resources they provide for me and really kind of continue to grow alongside with, and give time to my family.
Y yo puedo tener la capacidad también de cuidar a mis hijos.
And I can also have the ability to take care of my kids.
Yo fui una de las beneficiadas con las computadoras y justo ese día se había roto la mía cuando me dieron una.
So I was actually one of the beneficiaries of the computer and as a matter of fact, mine actually broke down when I got one of theirs.
Solo quiero agradecer este recurso para la comunidad porque en mi vida personal ha sido un impacto muy grande. Me ha empoderado a que yo puedo crear algo diferente y tengo la capacidad para hacerlo con el apoyo que me brindan.
So I just want to thank you, give thanks to this resource and the community because in my own personal, it has had a major impact and it's also empowered me to continue on.
Y solo quería agradecer a todos los que nos dan el recurso y están ahí para las capacitaciones y constantemente comunicándose porque eso no solo me ha beneficiado a mí, ha beneficiado a mis hijos también.
So I just want to thank you all for these resources and the training and the constant communication because it's really benefited me.
Gracias.
David Kotler.
Good evening, Council, Vice Mayor. My name is David Kotler and I was invited to come down here, it's quite an honor, to give you some information of what I found out here in Half Moon Bay. I've been in the hotel business as a general manager for almost over 20 years, but 15 years recently. And after a management company takeover, I found myself having to move on. At that time, as you might imagine, I haven't looked at or tried to modify, represent my resume. So I decided, okay, I'll go to the library, I'll go online, I'll check out what's going on, you know, because it's been so long. I'll come to find out, there's resume services that you can go to, you got to sign up for their whole program. One guy quoted me $600. And I was just for the heck of it at the library, going to print some out because I don't have a printer for my laptop. I said, by the way, does it, do you know anybody that does resumes? He says, well, you know what? If you just go around the corner here, across the street from Bank of America, there's the Opportunity Center. I said, really? I said. And they, 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 they looked what I need to have done. They go, oh yeah, sure they will. I said, okay. So I went to the Opportunity Center and first thing I noticed was, I've never seen Lego cubicles.[858.35][858.35](LAUGHING). That's so cool. But any case, and I met with that. Ed is an awesome, awesome guy. He, we met three times in person, had three, four phone calls and probably about six, seven emails to make sure that, you know, the content was, you know, changed to where we needed to change it, to make it more updated and to have a really good presentation. Then he went as far as to do, give me a cover letter that is a template that I can, you know, customize to any employer. And he also formatted my, my, all my references. And on top of that, even sent me some links to some jobs that were in my profession as a GM. And we still are in contact. I just got the resume on Friday, so I've got one response already on Tuesday. So that's a pretty good turnaround. You know, things are looking good and I think I, I know I'll be successful. I've been a resident at Half Moon Bay and homeowner for all my life and I appreciate every one of you and I'll be seeing you again soon. Thank you.[931.30][931.30](APPLAUSE).
I wish you luck David. Our last speaker is Mario Lopez.
Oh, my name is Mario Perez. Mi nombre es Mario Perez. Tengo poco tiempo estar en esta bella ciudad de Half Moon Bay.
So my name is Mario Perez and it's just been a short while that I've been in this beautiful city of Half Moon Bay.
Tengo aproximadamente cinco meses de estar aquí.
It's been about approximately five months since I've been here.
Llegué aquí con la ilusión y el sueño de poder encontrar un buen trabajo y poder este, ayudar a mi familia.
So I came here with the dream of finding a good job and helping my family out.
Porque muchas puertas y se me dificultó, la verdad. No podía encontrar yo la manera de cómo poder emplearme.
So I knocked on many doors and it was really difficult for me to really find employment.
Es cierto día, di con Job Train por medio de una recomendación que me, que me dieron.
So one day, I stumbled upon Job Train through a recommendation that somebody provided.
Y ahí sentí que las puertas empezaron a abrir en esta ciudad.
And so I really felt that the doors began to open in the city.
Me recibieron de una forma amable, respetuosa.
They really welcomed me in a caring way, in a respectful way.
En español.
In Spanish.
Me ayudaron a, me dieron a elegir qué tipo de trabajo me gustaría realizar.
So they actually helped me to choose what type of job that I'd like to do.
Y sí, efectivamente encontré un trabajo en un, en un establecimiento de comida rápida.
And yes, I found a job in a fast food establishment.
Pero no lleno mis expectativas ya que eran pocos días y pocas horas.
But it wasn't up to my standards because it was just a few days, not enough hours.
Volví a ir a Job Train y les expliqué mi, mi situación y les dije que en realidad no, no llenaba mis expectativas ese, ese trabajo.
Went back to Job Train and said, hey, this isn't just cutting it, you know, for my expectations.
Abrimos, abrieron sus expectativas de trabajo y buscamos en otro, en otro lugar.
So they opened everything up and we started looking in other places.
Me dieron capacitación, me proporcionaron calzado de trabajo, cursos, y me regalaron una computadora. Las puertas de Half Moon Bay estaban abriendo.
So they provided training, they gave me some work shoes, they gave me a computer. So in fact, the doors started opening up again.
Hoy en día tengo un magnífico trabajo, estoy fascinado, tengo de lunes a viernes toda la semana completa, ocho horas al día.
So today, I have a magnificent job. I'm really excited, Monday through Friday, eight hours a day.
Si me preguntaran cómo defino a Job Train con una sola palabra, diría que es como una llave.
So if people were to ask me how I define Job Train, I'd say it's like key, like a key.
Que abre las puertas del empleo y vincula al necesitado con ese empleo.
That opens doors for jobs and plugs the person who needs this job in.
Estoy enamorando de esta gran ciudad.
I'm falling in love with this great city.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.[1153.23][1153.23](APPLAUSE).
Gracias. That concludes the presentation. Does the council wish to make any comments? Go for it.
I just think it's great stuff and I'm happy to support renewing the contract and working on solutions for, after that expires. So thanks for all you do, thanks for all your energy that you're applying for the benefit of our community and our residents. It's really exciting. Thanks.
You know, I'll just say, you know, sometimes I'll read on Nextdoor, people say, you know, what's the city spending its money on? And, you know, we, we have some budget issues due to certain expenses that came up that were very unplanned for in terms of providing public safety services. But this is wise investment in the future. When you make an investment, there's risky investments and then there are well-thought-out smart investments. And when I hear all the things going on in this Opportunity Center and the potential and you heard about people were helping who already have million-dollar projects, I mean, that's pretty incredible, what we're doing here for a small city. And, and helping folks get the skills they need to take advantage of the opportunities. Because, you know, the job, you know, the job market has changed over years and people do need more skills. And very often, they feel, you know, embarrassed that they don't have those skills and they're fearful, how am I going to learn these skills in these new economies? And we are providing that in a scalable way in this community that probably will serve as a model for other towns when they hear about it. So really, just thank you for all the great planning from staff and putting these resources together and for all the terrific people who are working in this center together to really create opportunity and, you know, make some reasonable dreams come true in our city. So thanks very much.
I have a more provincial comment. We all know that the city is in financial straits. We have a $4 million structural deficit. I think this is a real, in the not-too-distant future way to improve the economic conditions of Half Moon Bay. And that will help the city relieve its economic problems. So it's a wonderful opportunity. It certainly helps a lot of people. And, and the incubator is just amazing that we're finally recognized as one of the few types of incubators that are completely related to green tech. So that, that's really remarkable. My last comment has to do with the fact that the money that is being allocated in this agenda item is coming from the county, not the city. So, you know, that's a good thing. So, based on that, can I have a recommend, a motion, please?
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
Yeah. And then to clarify, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as amended, along with the rest of.
Oh, is it right? Okay. I move that we adopt a resolu, hmm, resolution authorizing the city manager to amend a grant agreement with the county of San Mateo to extend operations of the Opportunity Center of the Coastside to a term ending on September 30th, 2025. And to amend the current service provider contracts for employment, small business and entrepreneurship services to a term ending on September 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $1,069,122.
No, no, 718.
Oh wait. John, sorry.
Do the, do the recommendation on the screen, please.
Sorry, I've had a long day today. Amend the current service provider contract for small business entrepreneurship and Opportunity Center operational services to a term ending on September 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $718,750.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just, if, before we end this item and before she walks away from the dais, I think we're so grateful for all of our partners and the incredible work that they do, but we, we have to recognize the leadership of Karen Decker, who has took, took an idea that existed and absolutely expanded upon it. And, and I also want to recognize Erica Wood, who's been a consultant through much of this. Both of them are so committed to this community and, and I think that's reflected in the way that it's been developed and brought forward to really benefit the community. So thank you to them as well.
I concur completely. The next item is the possible addition of a youth membership to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and councilmembers, John Doughty for the record. Of this, I'll be, I'll be brief. The Parks and Rec Commission is requesting your support tonight to add two youth members to the Parks and Rec Commission to make a total of seven members to that commission. This is laid out in your staff report, but the basic premise of this would be to add those two as positions as voting members. Allow them to serve and build as officers and potentially build leadership skills through that process to basically serve in the realm of representing the interest of, of the youth within the context of parks and recreation and the related issues there. We would be, the recommendation would be to seek entering freshmen through entering seniors, high school level. And we are recommending a minimum 14 years of age upon assuming the, the position with that. And the idea with this would be a one-year term, basically going August to August with the potential to extend a year. And this would be, these positions would be appointed by the council, just as any other commission member. If, and with your support tonight, we would be returning next meeting, October 1st, with a formal resolution modifying the, the provisions of the bylaws and addressing this. We, again, with your support tonight, will be advocating for folks to seek a position through our upcoming, tomorrow night, Future Leaders Civics Academy work and through other means and to, to get applicants for this position. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Are there any comments, questions from the council?
I'm totally in favor of it. Good idea.
Not mine.[1652.36][1652.36](LAUGHING). But I'll pass along the good words.
I move that we direct staff to return on October 1, 2024, with revisions to the commission bylaws, adding two youth members to the Parks and Rec Commission for a total of seven regular voting members.
A second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Excuse me. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our final business item is the financial report for the quarter ended on June 30th, 2024.
Always a pleasure.
Ken Stiles is going to present.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. So tonight, I'm going to be presenting the financial report for the quarter that ended in June 30th, which is our year end, end of the fiscal year. And every number you're going to see tonight is unaudited, so we're currently in the middle of our audit. And once that's completed, we'll bring those numbers to council, usually in December, along with our audited financial statements. But these are the latest and greatest numbers and are very unlikely to change significantly. Starting with revenues, transient occupancy tax, we budgeted 8.6 million. We've deceived about 8.1 for the year. That is a shortfall of about 450K or 5%. And I have a slide coming up after this to talk more about TOT, but generally tourism is overall down on the Coastside. Property taxes, we had budgeted 3.7. We received about 4.7, about a million over. So this is good news. About half of that is from vehicle and lieu fees. Council knows, but vehicle and lieu fees is a, also kind of like DMB fees are, is contested between the county and the state. And this, the, the overall thing about it is that the state has to explicitly fund these every year. So it's not always. has to explicitly fund these every year. So it's not always guaranteed. But this year, we received about 500K for previous year's allocations. The other half of that overage is just better-than-expected base property taxes, the property taxes on homeowners. Sales and use tax, we budgeted 3.2, received about 3.1, a shortfall of about 120K or about 4%. So sales and use tax is stagnating, and we are anticipating it to continue at least until 2025. Other revenues, some more good news there at least. We are anticipating receiving about 70K more, 700K more than what we had budgeted for. Half of that is about investment income on our cash in the bank. And then the other half of that is a mixture of planning and permit fees, doing better than it's budgeted, and we received a couple of grants. So overall, we have, our revenues are 21.6 million, about a million over than what we budgeted for, most of that being property taxes. So all revenues are doing better than what we had budgeted for are two main ones, transient occupancy tax and by extension, sales taxes stagnating. Here is our TOT for the past six months. The dark teal columns are for this year and the gray is the year prior. And five out of those six months, we, our TOT has been decreasing year over year, about an average of about 11%. So in 2022, our TOT high was 9 million. We're, right now, we're at the 8 million mark. So we're about a million off from that, from that high. And hindsight being 2020, that high was a bit of a bubble for us. So we're hoping that we've hit the bottom here, but we're still monitoring it month, month to month. So moving on to general fund expenditures. So good news here, despite TOT not looking great, is that we are anticipating to be under budget by about 2 million. And this is the result of very intentional work over the past 18 months. So council members, about a year ago, we identified a deficit. We've been going through our budget line by line, trying to make any and all adjustments that we could make that wouldn't have a service level impact. And on the slide here is showing what those big-ticket items are that make up that 2 million saved. Salary savings, we had some vacancies. We didn't rush to fill those vacancies. Some vacancies are still vacant, and we recouped a quite a bit of savings from that, about 600K. We negotiated one-time savings on our public safety contracts. We also, in the middle of the year, around February, we looked at our CFP funding and looked at each project and program and were able to scale back on a selected few. And then finally, our debt service refinancing. So we had a loan with, for A80 Stone Pine, we refinanced it through, with the county. And through that negotiation, we were able to defer one year or start payment one year later. So the result of all this is about 2 million saved, which is great. The asterisk there is that we still have a deficit, and these adjustments are essentially one-time in nature. So we're still working our way through that challenge, but the bright spot here is that that 2 million is extra funds that we can put back to our reserves. So what do reserves and fund balances look like? So at the end of June of last year, estimating reserves are 11 million unassigned, 3.6. Now, when we were developing the budget for this year, '24, '25, we had council approved to use a portion of our reserves and any unassigned fund balance to balance that budget. At the time of adoption, we were looking at 2.4 million being used from the reserve to balance this year's budget. Since we rented this previous year so well, once the audit is complete, staff will be recommending using that access to replenish those reserves. What that looks like briefly for the fiscal year that we're in now, '24, '25, if council were to approve returning any unassigned funds to reserves, again, that would happen in December or after the audit, the reserves would be about 10 million and unassigned would still be zero. And the deficit would still be about 4 million if nothing were to change. Obviously, between now and next year, we will keep addressing it, but if nothing were to change, it's still about 4 million. With that, I'll take any questions. And the recommendations is as follows. Accept the financial report for the quarter end on June 30th, 2024.
If, if it's okay, I'd like to just supplement the presentation, especially the end there where Ken talked about our ongoing deficit and the efforts to resolve that deficit because it's great, this is wonderful news tonight and a really testament to the work that the council's done, our team has done over the last year. And there's a lot of great work going into resolving our ongoing issue, which is what we really need to be focused on. So I just wanted to share a few things. One of the things Ken pointed out was our other revenues were, were higher than expected. And, you know, we're, some of those, of course, are planning and building fees and other services that we provide to the community at a cost. And as you know, we are, we're finalizing a fee study right now that is looking at every single fee that we charge for services here in the city and the costs of providing those services to identify where we're supple, you know, where we're covering the costs of other people's services, where we're, you know, maybe not charging enough for, you know, recreation programs or the, the staff time that we put into programs. And when you couple that with some of the other really great improvements that are happening in City Hall, for instance, our new GIS program, which is allowing us to take much more control and management of information that we have available and is, is being tied into our new, newly approved and hopefully onboard soon permitting system, we really see ourselves becoming more effective, more efficient. And, and that coupled with a fee study that gets us more appropriately aligned with the work that we're doing should generate additional revenues to the city and make sure that those charges are being placed in the right place with the right people and for the right services. On top of that, you know, we are obviously focused on recouping and bringing back tourism and sales tax here in Half Moon Bay. I think the presentation we had before this on the OCC is an example of an investment that we didn't have to make financially, but we are making through our staff resources, time and energy that should come back economically to the community and to the city through tax revenues. But we're also taking steps on the tourism side. If you recall, earlier this year, we funded the Hotel BID to do a, through the chamber, to complete a visitor's study. And part of that effort is to collect data on the people that are coming here and visiting our community and understanding where they're coming from and where they're spending money and where they're not spending money and really understanding the consumers that come here so that we can target advertising, marketing, and other efforts to get them to stay here and spend money. And we're starting to see some of that data. And it's really, really exciting to start to understand, you know, for instance, one of the reports I saw recently is what happens during our big events? Who's coming? How many people are coming to the events? Where are they coming from? And as we start to collect this data and really dig into it, I think we're going to glean a lot of really great information that's going to target our marketing efforts, get the right people here to visit, to stay in the hotels, to spend money in our local businesses, which is going to benefit everybody. Additionally, I was, Chris Lynn just reminded me that they're in the process of applying for official status as a welcome center, a Visit California Welcome Center on Main Street. And if we get it, which, based on the work that Chris Lynn does and what we saw tonight, I'm, I'm very confident that that's going to happen, that will come with over $200,000 worth of marketing for our regional area. And, and think about coupling that with this great data we have now. I, I think we're going to start to see the fruits of those efforts much more soon than, than we originally expected. We recently completed an interview with Business View Magazine, which is going to feature the city. And we've had outreach from other organizations that are interested in marketing the city to a broader international audience. So I think we're doing all the right things. You couple that with the Measure R, which will be on the ballot in November, and our efforts to cut back our costs. I'm, I'm really excited about the future, and I think we're going to find our way out of this financial challenge that we have right now and get back to sustainability and a focus on the great programs and the, the really innovative things that we do here in Half Moon Bay. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for Ken, for helping us to always understand where we are financially. And thanks to all of our partners for their investment and the work in getting the city back on track. So, thank you.
I think we're on the right track. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is positive direction. I mean, we've, despite the loss of TOT, we still had a revenue increase of around 1.1 million, roughly adding up the numbers there. And we've cut costs by 2,300,000. And yeah, hopefully, TOT will come back. And so, but that's some major costs, cost cuts. So appreciate that. I know, yeah, that's great to see those numbers are starting to improve. We still have a hefty budget deficit hanging over our heads, but at least, you know, we're chopping away at it. And yeah, look forward to the direction that we're heading. We're still recovering from things left over from pandemic and increases in service fees because, you know, state's got a budget deficit of 30 billion, and all those deficits trickle down in terms of the aid that we get. So all in all, thanks for your good work on this, Ken, and making it visible and understandable for the public. Really appreciate that. Thanks.
May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move that we accept the financial report for the quarter ended on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any commission or committee updates? Are there any city council reports?
Sea keg didn't meet all summer, and One Shoreline hasn't had much on their agenda. And Sam has quieted down, so I don't have anything to talk about.
That's good.
Oh, are we up to future discussion?
The next item is items for future discussion or possible agenda items.
Yeah. So based on, let me just see what his name was again. The gentleman who talked about the bridge, civil rights attorney, Mr.
I'll second that.
Yeah. I would like, yeah, Paul Grossman, thank you. Yeah, that's concerning. So I think it would be great if Public Works can take a look and tell, talk a little about what some of those options might be for the bridge. I know one of the bridges on the trail, remember, for like a year or two, they just put plywood over it, made it real smooth. And it lasted, you know, for almost a couple of years till we figured out how to get the bridge rebuilt. So I'm not saying that's the ultimate perfect solution, obviously. But if there are some solutions like that, that can make the bridge accessible again, I thought that was, I really appreciate Mr. Grossman bringing that to our attention and would love to see how we might be able to respond and what options we might have.
Yeah, and just remember, like, the population is aging, right? And a lot of those folks live in that development. And then we have a new community that'll be beginning soon, next year, with the manufactured homes. And there will certainly be people who need, you know, mobility assistance there. So I think now's a good time to look at that as part of the overall attention that we're putting on Stone Pine Road. You know, why not look at the, you know, the flow from Stone Pine Road onto Main Street?
Also, just from an exposure perspective, you know, we've been put on notice that it's really bad shape. And so I think it behooves us, you know, to avoid anybody having an accident there now that we know that. I mean, we know the conditions weren't great, but now it's really.
So I think when Magda was still city manager, didn't we do, prepare an ADA compliance plan?
We have an ADA transition plan in place. And I think in that plan, because of the hope to redo the bridge, that was an address. The good news on this topic is, and Maz is already, he's traveling now, so he's left, but we've been aware of this issue. We've been talking through solutions. The, the long-term solution is, is quite extensive, which is why we haven't implemented it. And so we've already been talking about some interim solutions, including what you shared tonight, which I didn't like, but after tonight, we may need to go down that path. So we can bring back on October 1st some of the options and get some feedback from you so we can move forward quickly. Because we agree, it's unacceptable to have an inaccessible bridge, especially there, that kind of divides the community in half. And I was really saddened to hear that our, you know, our worst fears have come true, that we have cut people off from their opportunity to enjoy our downtown, and we need to resolve it immediately.
And we heard it from a civil rights attorney.
Yeah, that, that's the worst part. But, but it sounds like a collaborative person who, who wants to work with us. So.
Great, thanks.
John, do you have anything to share on this?
I just want to clarify that when, when we did the assessments on the bridge back almost now a decade ago, almost, we did have an ADA compliance and, and the bridge was in compliance. Now, do we, I think all agree that it's not great and can be improved. I think the answer is yes. But for legal perspective and everything with that deal, there was compliance and everything with that deal. And when we did the ADA work and everything with that. But I think the answer is, we all agree, it can be improved significantly and needs to be improved significantly.
And mainly, it's the issue of the surface, right? We need a flat surface to accommodate.
Very rough, kind of almost hand-hewn decks.
It's charming.
Charming, but unsafe. So, so the, the short of it is, we will bring back something on October 1st to, to have you provide feedback on so we can move forward with a solution, at least a short-term solution immediately.
I just have a quick question. So when will we be seeing the new fees, the updated draft fees, fee structure for various?
Ken has walked away. But I believe, I, I know that the departments have been working with the consultants, putting it together. And I believe we're in the final stages. And our expectation is it will happen before the end of this fiscal, or this calendar year. So, thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.